Good evening. I'm David Watts, Jr. Welcome to the 2013 Town Election Candidates Debate. We have four candidates for the school committee. There are three seats up in contention this year. The format and the rules for the debate are as they've been in the past. The moderator will govern the conduct of the debate at all times. The order of the candidates has been determined just prior to the debate by a drawing of lots. There are no opening statements this evening. Questions to the candidates have not been provided and they must be relevant to issues important to the town. Please refrain from personal questions. In turn, each press representative will ask a question of the next candidate in order. To allow for as many questions as possible in the time allowed while maintaining the ability for all to have a chance to respond, candidates should please keep their answers short and to the point. The candidate asked the question may respond for up to two minutes. Each remaining candidate may present a one-minute response to the same question. I will raise a finger or a pen 10 seconds before the end. Please keep to the time limits. We'd like to get in as many questions as possible during the hour. At the end of the debate, each candidate in turn will have the opportunity to present a two-minute closing statement. In order to be able to adhere to program format time schedules, I'm going to compliance to stated time limits. Our press panel this evening is reporter Mark Sardella from the Wakefield Daily Item and editor William LaForme from the Wakefield Patch. And the candidates this evening are Evan Michael Kenny, Lisa A. Butler, Thomas F. Markham III, and Greg Liakos. Mark, you have the first question to Evan Kenny, please.
Thank you. The town will soon have a new superintendent of schools. What is the issue that you would like to see him put at the top of his agenda?
Well, for me, you know, I'm a college student right now and I just went through that transition from the Wakefield Public School System to university. And one of the biggest things I see lacking in the Wakefield Public School System is active use of technology. You know, when I go to school in Pittsburgh, at Pittsburgh State University, my 98 percent of them, we turn it online. That almost never happens at Wakefield High. And that's something I think Dr. Schreick knows about and I know he's going to push for.
I have to agree with Mr. Kenny that I think one of the major issues he'll have to deal with is technology. Along with that, though, I think I'd like to see him look at just academics in general and look at all areas and from all grade levels and see where we can improve and move forward in all directions, I think. And technology obviously will assist in that endeavor.
Thank you. Tom Markham.
I think the most important thing that is before the next superintendent is the implementation and the proper rollout of the new teacher and administrator supervision and evaluation. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts imposed a set of very fair and reasonable rules for all school districts to hold teachers and administrators accountable. We adopted those policies in conjunction with the Wakefield Teacher Association and administrators last fall. And this coming year is really the first year of that. Our teachers are our most valuable resource. To properly supervise and evaluate them is the most important task before the superintendent next year.
Thank you. Greg Liakos.
Well, I would agree with each of the candidates. And I think there's a relationship there because I think implementing new technology is going to also require a new and more rigorous teacher training program that allows teachers to appropriately use that new technology, the new software and hardware to ensure that it's used correctly in the classroom and that it doesn't languish. I would also add that the superintendent has an important role to play in seeing through the building project to ensure that it's done on time and on budget and so that we continue to build confidence with the taxpayers of Wakefield and that that project becomes a success.
Thank you. Bill LaForme, question to Lisa Butler, please.
Hi, Mrs. Butler.
Hi.
I'd like to follow up on the technology question just a little bit. Last week, I was with the lieutenant governor and another reporter and we saw the kids at the vocational school using a 3D printer, for example, which is very cutting-edge. And I'm just wondering, I'm aware of the wireless initiatives. I'm wondering, are there any other things that you've been talking about as a school committee for a little bit further down the road for the district regarding technology?
Well, I think overall, when you talk about technology, unfortunately, our district, it has been underfunded for so long that we have taken strides to really get caught up and just to be where we should be. And I think wireless is our next implementation that we're really looking at. Over the last couple of years, we've had to focus on, you know, the labs, the computer labs, so that we have technology and the hardware is up to date. And we've had to focus on, like this past year, our network and getting that. You know, we hired a consulting company to come in and help us with that and implement that. And that's been a really big success this year. We're calling, you know, just from hearing from all the teachers and the students. And we've spent a lot of time, also this year, we've had to upgrade the teacher and the faculty's, their computers. So, and I'm also on the Capitol Planning Committee. And that's been a focus of that in general across the town is to make sure that our technology across the town, it's been, you know, it's been lacking for so long that we're really playing catch-up. But I think, you know, wireless is the next big step. We've also talked about bring your own devices. We've observed, I've actually other districts to see how they're implementing it, Redding, Burlington. And we're really focusing on that, trying to really catch up and just keep moving forward in the area. And I think we've done a pretty good job. I think we still have a ways to go, but I think we've made some great strides.
Tom Markham.
I would agree with Mrs. Butler entirely that this past year, we made monumental strides. But we shouldn't, in some ways, candidly, we shouldn't pat ourselves on the back for catching up that this, that the town and the school committees of the past have tremendously underfunded technology. And it's embarrassing to say that, that the types of things that our teachers and our students didn't have in the, perhaps as much as a near generation of students was embarrassing. It requires an appreciation funding. It requires some technology proficiencies. It requires a reallocation of resources. And frankly, the ability to stand up and make a decision that these are the types of things at which some appropriate funding needs to be directed. And we need to trust the teachers and the staff with the work that we expect them to do. And technology is no small part of that in 2013.
Greg Liakos.
I certainly agree with Mrs. Butler and Mr. Markham that technology is behind and that we're beginning to catch up. I'd caution, though, that we shouldn't put too much stress on technology as a panacea for solving the problems of the school system. We've got a lot of progress to make in teacher training. We've got buildings that are outdated, in some cases badly outdated. We've got business as strong as it should be. We've got a lot of priorities and it's easy to focus on technology because we live in the technological age and we see so much progress being made. But there are many, many ways to reach students and many, many ways to help students learn and grow in the classroom. And we shouldn't lose sight of all the other priorities that are in front of us.
Thank you. Evan Kenny.
You know, Greg makes a good point that we shouldn't be making blanket statements about jumping out at technology and throwing technology in the classroom. It needs to be used for real academic purposes. So, the first thing I would do, I'm not going to pretend that I have all the answers. I'm going to go to my administrators who I know have been hired by fantastic superintendents. And I'm going to see what, check with them to see what they need. You know, one thing that I know that has happened at the high school, Dr. Smith has pushed through a student-run technology office. And that was a collaborative effort. And that's great to be able to see what the students can do with the technology in their hands. And it's a great gauge to figure out doing the future.
Thank you. Mark Sardella, question for Tom Markham, please.
Tom, in light of Sandy Hook, do you think our schools are safe enough? And what measures would you support to make our schools as safe as possible?
Well, that's a difficult question because your premise of Sandy Hook was such a national tragedy and devastating situation that you can practically never prepare for. You know, we could build a fortress around our schools and still have the fear of the tragedy of Sandy Hook. But having said that, I do think the schools are safe enough. I do think that the types of measures that we have in place now can be improved and they need to be. These were things that Dr. Murphy, our interim superintendent, this school committee, talked about starting last summer, even before Sandy Hook was on anyone's radar screen. So, working together with the DPW, who is the facility operator of the schools, and the police department, there is a task force in place to exactly look, you know, at these, at some of these measures. To quickly rattle off a couple of what the measures may be, I would think an enhanced system of locks, an enhanced system of cameras at all doorways and cameras at all points of entry. That we have locked doors now that people need to be buzzed in during, immediately after the opening of school. But that needs to be enhanced. That technology is also old and outdated. We need to have the administrators and teachers and students on constant alert for what different dynamics of a crisis may be. The old days of don't cut it anymore. There are a number of types of tragedies, unfortunately, that students and teachers need to be prepared for, whether they're evacuation drills or lockdowns or lock-ins. There's a whole new lexicon of terms. And I think we are in pretty good stead getting there, but we can always improve.
Okay. Greg Liakos, please.
Thank you. Tom Markham, I think makes some good points. And I agree with him. Our schools are among the safest places we have in our community.
I apologize.
That's okay. So, it's important that we don't overreact and react to horrific tragedies like that that happened in Newtown, Connecticut. There was recently a report that was published by a coalition of groups that included the NAACP and the Alana Justice. It's called the Safe Schools Report. And it focuses on prevention. And it focuses on providing the resources for students and teachers that prevent these kinds of things from happening again. And that report really resonated with me because my wife is a school social worker in the public schools in her area. And every night, I hear from her of the horrific problems that the students that she deals with and what those students bring to the schools. And I think we can do so much more in Wakefield to reach those students who are having trouble and prevent those kinds of problems before they get to the point of violence.
Evan?
Well, I think we're lucky in Wakefield, again, to have those trusted administrators. I think we're, our students are very safe in this town. I mean, you know, I just graduated from the high school. They know who I am down there and I still can't get by the main office without putting on a guest pass. So, I trust our administrators and I think the measures, you know, you can't get into the high school. The doors are locked. And, you know, I'm using the high school as an example. I do think we're lucky in Wakefield that our students are exceptionally safe.
Lisa Butler.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of echoing what Mr. Markham said. We have, as a school committee, we have been discussing safety before the horrible Newtown tragedy. We have talked about updating our locks. Some of, a lot of our doors have older locks and talked about updating our locks. And since the tragedy, we've also met with our town administrator and some of the other officials, the police department, fire department, DPW, all the building principals, and kind of tightened up our security going into buildings, you know, getting escorted to where you need to go and things like that. So, they've tightened up that a little bit. They've, and they're looking at upgrading systems, card swiping, things like that, and just evacuation procedures. In general, look overall at what we have and to see where we can improve. But at some point, I don't think we can, you know, you can't prevent every tragedy. You can only just try to do your best.
Bill LaForme, question for Greg Liakos, please.
Mr. Liakos, on another crime and safety type issue, there's been a lot in the news recently about level-one sex offenders and their access to children and how we don't always know where they are or who they are. Are you confident that the district is doing enough to keep them out of the employ and out of access to children in this area?
Yes, I am. I think we have a strong administrative team in Wakefield. From the interim superintendent on down, we have professional educators who are very, very familiar with the state laws that govern how the different levels of sex offenders interact and where they're prohibited from going in the school. I really have no concern about that. We have a very professional staff and I don't think that should be a worry for the Wakefield Public Schools.
Evan Kenny.
Like I just said, I think we're lucky in Wakefield that we know our students are safe. Like Greg just said, we have a fantastic administrative team. Those administrators have earned our trust. They've done a great job. We should continue to trust them to keep our students safe. I don't think there's any risk of sex offenders coming anywhere close to our students.
Or just working around them is sort of the idea. The level 16 of 17, I believe, exists in Wakefield that committed crimes against kids, so.
Lisa Butler.
Well, we do have quarries. We do have a process for all volunteers and all employees, even to be quarried. We even have any construction workers at the Galvin Middle School, even if they're outside, any kind of area, they all have to be quarried. That was a big process. We had worked on in the high school, same thing, same place. We have pictures of sex offenders that are sent to each school. So, they're in all the buildings, the libraries. But ultimately, I think what it comes down to is parents need to educate their children against this type of thing and to be aware of it and to let them know. So, I think it starts with the parents, but it's also up to the, I think the administration is doing a good job in preventing any, I guess, coming into the area while they're at school and keeping them safe during the school hours.
Tom Markham.
This is about awareness and vigilance. And I think that Mrs. Butler is exactly right. The types of things that we don't do as an institution and frankly, that we can't do as an institution rests with the parents and guardians and those that have the trust of their children. I think we do follow, as a school department, follow the law to a T with regard to criminal background, criminal quarry checks, criminal background checks. We are about to begin to enhance the requirement as the state legislature has mandated going into fiscal year 14 for fingerprinting. So, we have just now increased the requirement for being involved in the Wakefield Public Schools and all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I thank the legislature and congratulate them for taking that very difficult step and very difficult decision. It's not going to be easy to roll that out. And there are going to be a lot of folks that are going to consider that to be an imposition into their, into certain, you know, privacy rights. We had that discussion at town meeting last year. But we do follow the laws. We would need to continue to do so.
Mark Sardella, question for Evan Kenny, please.
Evan, there was recently, for lack of a better term, controversy over a substantial shortfall in the FY13 school department budget. And how would you explain that to taxpayers if you were called upon to do so?
Well, you know, the biggest thing that we need to do as a committee is to communicate, communicate effectively with the superintendent, making sure we're following up on reports, and working together with the finance committee and the other administrations in town. You know, that error was a simple miscommunication. And these are things we just need to tighten up on.
Lisa Butler.
Can you just repeat the question again? You said the end of it was, you mentioned the controversy. And what was the question?
Just how would you address it? And if you, if called upon, how would you explain it to the taxpayers at town meeting?
Oh, okay. That makes sense. Yeah, it wasn't as much of a controversy as it was made out to be. And I think it was more of miscommunication. And I think it was involving special education. If anybody knows the budget, they know that special education is like a moving target at times during the year. It varies. We have so many different things that can affect it based on students who move in and out of the district. That affects what you have to pay. The actual outside tuitions that we send the children to the schools to, they have the ability to raise their tuition and retroactively, in the middle of the year, and charge us retroactively, even though we've budgeted for a certain amount of tuition. So, there's varying issues. But at this point, this particular issue was not so much the controversy. We had just not received the funding yet. It was going to be there. We just hadn't received it. In the meantime, yes, we've had some, you know, we're looking at a potential shortfall in our special education. But again, there are so many different things that determine it. It's almost like snow, the snow and ice. You don't know, you can't always budget what you need.
Tom Markham.
To further clarify what Mrs. Butler started, Mark, the question, there was not a shortfall in the fiscal 13 budget. There was a shortfall in the special education out-of-district tuition line. And that was a $27,000 deficit that across the aggregate 20, you know, $26 million budget was where that shortfall got represented. The concern that was raised that became something was that the funding wasn't yet received from the Commonwealth through the circuit-breaker special reimbursement fund. They come in quarterly payments and then, so anyways, at the end of the day, it was a matter that I would, I guess, agree was mishandled with some means of communication. But it was certainly not summarily disclosed. The superintendent informed the school committee in January. The school committee informed the public shortly thereafter. And these types of conversations are always healthy ones.
Greg Liakos.
I would agree with Mrs. Butler and Mr. Markham that these kinds of expenditures are often hard to predict. I think there's a bigger issue, though, which is that our early education and especially elementary education curriculum is weak in a lot of areas. I've heard this from many parents. And as a result, we're failing to diagnose problems with kids that are resulting in them being moved into special education and in effect costing our town more funds. So, I think if we strengthen early education, strengthen the elementary school curriculum, we can head off some of those costs earlier and save our community some resources.
From a question for Lisa Butler, please.
Mrs. Butler, one of the readers today asked me about the school district's music program, saying that back in the '70s, they were actually quite renowned statewide and that they slipped somewhat in recent years. And just was asking, is there any kind of possibility of helping to revive that in the coming years, the school music programs?
Music programs? Oh, well, actually, I think right now, we are pretty widely known.
Specifically, it was the string program, I think.
The string program. Well, we do have strings, starting in fourth grade, that students are allowed to take strings from fourth grade on. And it's part of the, it's part of their music curriculum. And then they continue it through the middle school and the high school, which I think is helping to develop our orchestra and our strings later on. We have a very strong music program. And I think we're very well-known around the state in that we have gone to, if you listen to, if you follow our meetings, you hear our music department does, I mean, our music program does very well. Our band, marching band, some of our other groups have won many awards. Our marching mayor was invited down to the Fourth of July Parade this past summer in the, down at the Washington DC, which is a very big deal to be invited. And so, I think in general, I think we're pretty strong. So, I'm not sure where we could improve. I guess we could always improve in every area. But, I mean, my concern right now, too, is not just the music. We have our academics that we should focus on also. And I think that's an important thing to focus on. But I think from what, you know, I think we have a very good reputation as far as performing arts in general.
Tom Markham.
Bill, I think your reader may have been trying to relive something of the past. We have a renowned and outstanding, that has gotten accolades, recognition statewide and nationally for some time. While we can always, hey, there's always a means to improve. And I don't want to pretend to speak for the performing arts from the '70s because I honestly don't know, you know, about that. But the work that our performing arts instructors and our volunteer parents and the music boosters is extraordinary. And the work of our music program has, as it's been implemented and rolled into the curriculum, that it's not just an extracurricular activity. It is part of the curriculum in a very, very outstanding and solid way.
Greg Liakos.
Yes, I would agree with Mrs. Butler and Mr. Markham. Wakefield has an exceptional music education program and in many respects, has very strong arts education in general. That's a lot of the work that I do on Beacon Hill. I am the communications director for the Massachusetts Cultural. Our mission is to advocate for the arts and humanities and public education. The place that I see some concern, however, is in the extracurricular area because the rising fees that students and parents are being asked to contribute to pay for these music programs, along with athletics and other extracurricular activities, science fairs and things like that, are starting to become a burden. And I think we need to take a look at how we can alleviate some of those fees and figure out a better system so that all children have an opportunity to participate in the arts and in other extracurricular activities.
Evan Kenny.
Yeah, you know, the music program is a staple in this community. I'm surprised to even hear that someone would suggest otherwise. You know, the marching band medals yearly, like they make it look easy. You know, they play it every year at MICA. But I'm glad that Greg brought up user fees. It's a great point that it's awful to balance the budget on the backs of these parents when, A, not all parents have to pay the fee, and B, you know, when my parents were in school, their parents didn't have to pay these kinds of fees. So, I think it's a great point that we need to look at, not only making sure that these fees don't increase, but also looking at ways to create money within the budget so that we can decrease these fees.
Mark Sardella, question for Tom Markham, please.
I'm going to follow up on what Greg and Evan just, excuse me, talked about and give the other candidates a chance to talk about user fees. Parents are under a constant barrage of fundraisers and a variety of school, for a variety of school-related needs. At what point, as a committee member, can you say enough is enough and find ways to fund these through the regular budget?
Well, that's always a difficult question and one that deserves, you know, a fair amount of time, much more than the two-minute answer or a one-minute follow-up. But having said that, unfortunately, our user fees have become a means to provide extracurricular support for athletics and extracurricular activities that unfortunately are still wanted and desirable and important for learning, but cannot be otherwise afforded or properly afforded within the school district budget. If we were to, just, you know, use a couple facts, we raise approximately $240,000 a year in athletic user fees. If we were to consider disbanding athletic user fees, you know, that's almost, that's a quarter of a million, or more than a quarter of a million dollars that we're not going to go find very easily in a budget that is as tight as it already is. So, these are some of the trade-offs that need to be made. These are difficult decisions that no one certainly wants to support. But the burden of public education that bears, that is borne by the taxpayers needs to be centered around academics and teaching and learning. The well-roundedness of that student certainly has a role to play there. But there simply isn't enough money in our community to support all the things that we want to do. So, we unfortunately have to be able to provide an affordable means to allow parents and students different opportunities and other opportunities. If we, we should always look at in a very judicious and careful way before we ever support a fee, before we ever raise a fee, ever support a fee, before we ever raise a fee, before we do anything that, that, that will, will impact teaching and learning in a classroom by taking a dollar away from that. But those are the difficult decisions with a body of information and a body of knowledge that, that school committee members, you know, must make.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Greg Leakos.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we get an estimate at the beginning of each fiscal year for all of the extracurricular activities available to our students and how much those are going to cost? And take that number to town meeting. Ask the voters of town meeting to vote it up or down and say, voters of Wakefield, these things are important to us. Are they important enough to you to pay for them? I think we'd be surprised at the result. I think they'd support them.
Evan Kenny. You know, a lot of these extracurricular programs, whether they're music or athletic or, or clubs even, they are, they are, like I said earlier, they are staples in the community. And, and they help build a culture that you can't measure with a standardized test or with a grade. And I think they're really, really important. Now, a lot of these programs are running in the black, athletic programs, some of them are running in the black. And, and I think that if, if, you know, we're, it might be necessary to charge some of these parents these fees right now. But if we get more money than, than, than we needed for, I think they should be reimbursed for it.
Lisa Butler.
Well, let's see. I guess as Mr. Markham said, there is a lot to say. First of all, it is easy to, to look on the outside and say, oh, you shouldn't have any fees. But when you're looking at a budget and building a budget, and you need to find the money from some, you know, you need to find, fund, you need to find, to fund a lot of things. And unfortunately, we do have to fund some, you know, fees for you, we do have to charge fees for performing arts and for athletics. But in the six years that I've been there, that I've been on the school committee, we've only raised the sports, the athletics once, and we've only raised performing arts once. And we, and the reason we did, we looked closely before we did it, and we looked closely and we, we tried to figure out, is there any other way to do it? And we looked very carefully at each one. And as far as, I'd have to disagree with Mr. Kenny, we are not in the black in any, in any group. I don't know where he thinks we're coming in the black, but the, what we have, we've actually had shortfalls in the athletic when our teams do well because, so, and they further along into, our expenses increase when they go further into the playoffs. So things like that, we've, we've tried to look at restructuring, we've restructured our fees to try to make it all fair for, so that if people, you know, we charge the fees based on how much, how active they are, how much they meet, things like that, and what their, what their budget is.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. Bill LaForme, a question for Greg Leakos, please.
Mr. Leakos, following up on the humanities, over the years, has the humanities somewhat maybe taken a backseat to other academic matters, just right now, technology and anything CAS tests, for example?
Yes, I think that's a good question. We hear a lot, for example, about STEM learning, science, technology, engineering and mathematics. STEM is important, but so is history. History, to me, is a central subject because teaching history gives our students a sense of their place in America's story and gives them a, a sense of civic obligation, a sense of belonging in, in a community. That's why I think that history, both teaching American history writ large, world history, languages, but also teaching local history. I'm, I'm a proud member of the board of the Hartshorn House, Wakefield's historic treasure. And every year, the Hartshorn House brings in elementary school children to learn about the house and its place in Wakefield's local history. And I think that's such an important message for young children to learn. They feel a sense of, of community and a sense of experiences like that. I think we should be doing more of that.
Evan Kenny. Yeah, I, I totally agree with Greg that, that history is a, is an extremely important part of academics. Overall, of course, there are a lot of different aspects of academics, but I can tell you, I mean, just, just getting out of the Wakefield Public School System, I had some fantastic educators who taught me history classes. And I wouldn't say that, you know, humanities is taking a backseat. I think I took a fantastic interest in, in history. I learned a lot about history. And I think as long as we, we keep the focus and, and make sure we are, we're hiring the right people, it'll continue on that track.
Lisa Butler.
I think I have to agree with Mr. Kenny in that I don't think history is taking a backseat or the humanities. In the, in the past couple of years, we've looked at the elementary history curriculum and we've made it more consistent across there. We've piloted, we started with the fourth grade and we piloted backwards so that all elementary children, same education in history. I think that we've, I think we've, we've tried to be consistent across. Nobody's saying that technology is more important than any other academics.
Tom Markham.
I would agree. We have not, we have not put in history, excuse me, the humanities in a backseat. I think the example that, that Mr. Leakos gave shows the front and center in many ways that, that local history and local humanities play. But I think the important piece is that we, we have driven our social studies curriculums around the state frameworks. There are state and federal requirements on teaching and learning across, across each of the disciplines. And, and those things have been in place for many years. We have now, as Mrs. Butler alluded to, finally, in the last couple of years, school committee has voted, and the school department has worked very hard to align, to make sure that all the elementary schools in each of the grades, no matter in which of the four buildings you're in, are getting the same humanities and the social studies curriculum, preparing them for the eighth, for the middle school studies, preparing them for high school studies, preparing them to fall in line for the, for the state and, and federal frameworks. And that's a very important part of how the humanities program frankly has evolved and not taken a backseat, that bringing an alignment is a critical part of the, of the value of, of education for kids across the town.
Mark Sardella, a question for Evan Kenny, please.
Evan, for the past few years, the Wakefield School Department, the School Department has not had an assistant superintendent of schools. The proposed FY14 budget calls for an assistant superintendent at a cost of $110,000. Do you support adding this position?
You know, we just hired Dr. Striker as a superintendent, and he looks like a superman on paper, and he is, you know, superintendent. But I, I don't think necessarily they can do everything. And I think if we have an assistant superintendent, that allows the superintendent to spend more time with staff, and it is necessary to, for that position, for them to communicate with staff, because they do need to connect and, and he does need to make sure he knows what's going on, instead of just being stuck behind a desk doing all the stuff that the assistant superintendent could be doing. So I do think it's an important role.
Lisa Butler.
Well, I, I'd like to start off by saying that we do have it in the budget and, but as superintendent indicated, our interim superintendent indicated that right now, we were voting, what we voted on was an amount and we're going to prioritize. But that being said, I do agree that we do need an assistant superintendent because basically, well, a lot of what Mr. Kenny said is that our superintendent needs support. I think if we, if we give our superintendents the support they need, allow them to do other things and, and like apply for grants and market our district to businesses, you know, I think in the long run, it will save us some money. I think it will make our district stronger and it will take, you know, people are worried about a superintendent leaving in three to five years. It's a lot of pressure not to have any support. Our building principals are there to support their buildings and be educational leaders at the building. So our superintendent is going to need someone to rely on, I think. And, and being on the school committee for the last six years, I've seen the need for it and, and observing the last superintendents.
Tom Markham.
I, I do support the need for an assistant superintendent. I think that that is a critical position. We are not so small of a community or a school district that having a strong central office, a number-two person, is not entirely appropriate. I think that the key support, some of the questions out there I've heard and, and community members about, have been about, well, what's the best support, direct support for students? And I would, I would argue that an administrator's job is to provide additional resources and additional support for, for teachers, thereby reducing some of the burden that administrators at the building level and teachers at the, at the classroom level have. And that's the job of administrators. So by, by, if we can provide greater resources, whether it is, as Mrs. Butler said, through grants or application of, of, of better alignment, of professional development, or a whole, host of other things, a strong number-two person in this district will provide better resources and better access to allow the teachers to do their job, which is teaching and learning.
Greg Leakos.
I agree that the position is necessary. If, if we want to have a first-class school system, we need a first-class top administration. The question is, is it necessary now? At the budget hearing last week, teachers made a very strong case for restoring library and media specialists in the elementary schools in the Galvin before we go and hire a new assistant superintendent. And I think that case was so strong that, that it, it won the day. So I would support restoring those positions first before we hire a new assistant superintendent.
Bill LaForme, a question for Lisa Butler, please.
Mrs. Butler, every year, the school district, of course, wants to improve upon its EM CAS performance. And just looking at that, are there any strategies or anything looking ahead that you'd advocate or feel that maybe the district could do to sort of further things along or?
Well, I think, I think we're, we're in doing well now. I think we're heading in the right direction. I think our curriculum coordinator is doing a fa, is doing a terrific job and looking at, you know, aligning the curriculum and focusing on, you know, are we teaching the right things? And I think that she's worked really hard, some of the, the new initiatives for, as far as at the, bringing like, for example, the differentiated instruction in reading and math, they've added that to the, at the elementary level. And, and bringing it up to the middle school to start with the, with the reading. And I think they've improved in that. And I think that's where we're headed in the right direction. And I think if our curriculum coordinator is allowed to work with our prince, building principals, then I think that's where we're headed in better scores.
Tom Markham.
I would simply say that the answer to that is in three words, common planning time. That we do not provide enough opportunities for teachers to meet in, in discipline groups, meaning among, among the disciplines, to, to best prepare each other and to share ideas, to share best practices, to, to learn what isn't working well and to, to share ideas about what, what is working well. Teachers are often their own best educators. Common planning time is a critical part of, of a school day and a school year that we simply haven't spent enough time building into the school year calendar or building into the teacher work year. And I think that it goes hand in hand certainly with professional development. Professional development must be quality. It must be what teachers need, not just what administrators think. But common planning time is a critical part of that. Teachers are a wealth of information and they, they need that time to share and, and expose each other to, to, to best practice.
Greg Leakos.
I would agree with Chairman Markham. I think that if you look at the surveys that were done in the search for the new superintendent, again and again, the theme comes up for the need for deeper and higher-quality teacher professional development. So I think that's got to be a priority for our district.
Thank you. Mark Sardella.
Are you satisfied with the transitional plans for students in terms of athletics and other areas during the Galvin construction?
Well, you know, you know, satisfied, Mark, is a difficult, is a difficult word to, to arrive at. I guess at the end of the day, I, I would probably wind up saying yes. Because, you know, it was, it became one of those things, I want to say this a little tongue-in-cheek, that, you know, we worked so hard as a community through a couple of losing battles over the last 10 years to really do an advocacy effort that started at the school committee and just exploded with the, with the galvanized Wakefield group and a whole host of others that really, that really brought that forward. But as they, as it became more and more real that, that we were going to be able to build a new Galvin middle school, you know, our reality set in. You're going to build something, you're going to take something down. When you're going to build something, something isn't going to be there for 15 or 18 months. And so wouldn't it be great if we could have all the, all, all the gym space that we needed and all the field space that we needed while we were in the middle of construction? But that, that isn't practical. I want to certainly, and I, as a member of the committee and as chairman, I've thanked the town for coming forward with some refurbishment plans for the Americal Civic Center, making that as a really good Plan B for the use, both in academics, for physical education and for, for extracurricular use. And there are going to be some fields that are still being located with the, with the displacement of the fields behind the Galvin for, for the year and a half or, or almost, almost the two years that they will be. So is it satisfactory? No. But I think the excitement behind a new Galvin middle school almost has to rule the day on that, that there are enough fields in our community that, and the telling to step up and, and, and help make some improvements there to bring those fields up, up to snuff. And if we have to use fields in other communities or use a gym space in other communities, then, then those, those plans are in place as well. But I think the excitement of a new middle school rules the day on the disappointment of sort of an interim displacement.
Thank you. Greg Leakos.
I would agree with Chairman Markham there. The new Galvin is the reason I got involved in Wakefield Public Life last year when I ran for the Board of Selectmen. I really felt that that race needed a strong voice and support of the project. And I'm really proud to have the support of many of the leaders of the galvanized movement last year, Mike Scola and Gene Sorensen, the co-chairs are two of my strongest supporters. And I think that Chairman Markham is right in the sense that the excitement around that project has to translate into a project that succeeds, in terms of a building project, and all the complexity that, that involves. And in the long term, as a building that we keep and maintain, a lot of the voters have said to me and said during the campaign for the new Galvin, well, we don't take care of the buildings that we already have, why should we build a new one? And they have a point. And we've got to demonstrate to them that we're taking care of this new building over the long term.
Evan Kenny.
To get back to the question of whether or not I'm satisfied, I would say, first of all, that I, I actually am satisfied, you know. Building a middle school is a massive project and the building is massive. And like Mr. Markham said, things will go up and things will come down. And in that process, we can't expect, you know, no interruptions whatsoever. So it is unfortunate that, you know, groups like the WVA will have a tougher time getting gym space and stuff like that. But it'll be worth it in the end when we have a beautiful Galvin middle school.
Lisa Butler.
Well, I'd have to say, as Mr. Markham said, you're never really truly satisfied because, but in the end run, the Galvin, the new Galvin with the fields is going to be awesome for the town. But there has been a transitional plan put in place. We did, as a member of the permit building committee, we had, we got together with the high school athletic director, all the, all the directors from the youth sports to coordinate, you know, what their, who uses the fields when. We had this big spreadsheet of who uses them and when and to coordinate well, you know, and, and to bring into that coordination, the town administrator, the DPW, Mr. Stinson, to talk about the field renovations, which is also going to help us. And when the field renovations at the Landry Inn, at the, the Beasley, when those are up, that's going to help transition. Some of the youth sports will get more use out of it. And we did go so far as, as talk to the, the builders of the Galvin to ask them to push off going on to the fields, you know, let some of the youth sports finish up their spring seasons to try not to push all these youth out of, you know, out and have no place to go. But I think ultimately what's going to happen, the transition, it's going to help the transition, especially with gym spaces, that we all work together, use all our buildings, all our fields as a town to come, to plan and make sure everybody can get, you know, some use and it's, and it's equitable.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes, starting with Evan Michael Kenny.
I like my middle name. It sounds like, I feel like I'm in trouble. You know, you know, I'm a, I'm a young guy and I have friends who ask me, you know, why are you running for school committee? Why don't you run for real office? And I tell them, this is a very real position. You know, every vote that I would cast as a, as a, as a school committee member would directly affect the education of, of the children in Wakefield, in the Wakefield Public School System. And one thing that I think that the committee is lacking right now, not that the committee's done a great, he's done a fantastic job, I don't want them to take offense, I think, but one of the, the biggest things the committee's lacking right now is a voice that represents the immediate product of the Wakefield Public School System. I'm running for that reason. I want to give the voters of Wakefield the opportunity to diversify the perspective on the school committee. I want to represent the voice of the kid who graduates and jumps into the job search and jumps into the, to the, the world of higher education. We are lacking that voice in the committee right now, and, and I'm ready to, to be that representative. Yield the rest of my time, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
Well, I guess I'm not as smooth as Mr. Kenny is. I have to read, I have to read mine. I get a little nervous on these public speaking. I get a little nervous on these public speaking events. But I just want to, first of all, I want to thank WCAT and the Wakefield Item for sponsoring the debate. I would also like to thank Mr. Sardella and Mr. LaForme for their great questions, and I'd like to thank also for participating. I have three children in the system, Wakefield Public Schools right now, so I have a vested interest in this committee. I feel like I have proven myself that I am dedicated to this town, I am all in. The decisions I make directly affect my children, and I've proven that I am dedicated to the town in my volunteer, my involvement in the PTOs, school councils, youth sports, and also on this committee, which is almost a full-time job in itself. It's not just meetings every Tuesday, or every other Tuesday. We have subcommittee meetings, and we make tough decisions, and they're not always popular. But we do try to, it's always in the best, in my case, it's always in the best interest of my kids, the kids in Wakefield, and the town itself. I think the town is moving in the right direction, and I feel like our six years that we're moving forward also with the Galvin, and with technologies improved, I think we've done a really good job of moving forward in spite of these times. When I first started, we had our budgets, our budget increases were .5%, 1%, minus .25%. So we're now looking at 4% for next year, and I think that's going to help us get back to restoring some of the needed services and programs and positions. So I guess I would like to close and say that, you know, I've served on many committees, I volunteered on many different ways, and I'm running for school committee because I believe that our schools and our town are moving in the right direction, and I think we've shown improvement in areas like curriculum and technology, the construction of the new middle school, we're upgrading our sports fields, but we still have work to do, and I would like to be a part of these projects ongoing, and to continue the work that I've done in the last six years.
Thank you. Tom Markham.
I'd also like to thank WCAT for their support of this debate, and the Wakefield Item, and the Wakefield Patch for participating and being our moderators and hosts. Also, I'd like to congratulate my fellow candidates and wish everyone the best. I'm running for reelection to the Wakefield School Committee and ask for one of your three votes on April 30th. I believe that I have worked very hard to be a leader of this community and of the school district. I have had the honor of not only being a school committee member, but for the last year, being the chair in some very interesting times, and leading and working with the committee to accomplish a great deal of things. I consider myself to be a data-driven, to be someone who is thoughtful and fair-minded. I want to be an advocate for our schools. That doesn't always mean it's popular, it doesn't always mean that it's easy, and sometimes those advocacy issues become the greatest challenges. I think some of the things that we talked about here tonight have a lot to do with the role of a school committee member as being an advocate. You need to have a particular balance between what you advocate as far as best needs for teaching and learning with other needs across the town, with, of course, those unaffordability for within what taxpayers and citizens can afford. We need to see, and we need to have a vision. We need to see our progress be continuously made. We need to make continuous improvement each year. That isn't, that we don't make mistakes, because indeed we will. Continuous improvement isn't about not making a mistake twice, and I feel very, very strongly about that. The types of things that the school committee and the school district have put in place, both in the last couple of years and frankly in the last year, have been monumental. And that's all about building consensus around our community, providing some leadership, providing some direction, being prepared to stand up and be counted when the opportunity was there, or when the need was there. I view my primary role as a school committee member of one who can provide resources. We are entrusted with a $26 million-a-year budget by the taxpayers and by the community, and how we spend that is most, is our greatest responsibility, and providing resources to teachers to better allow them to do their jobs of teaching and learning. And that's why I'm asking for another term on the Wakefield.
Thank you. Greg Leakos.
Thank you. A thank you to WCAT, our journalists, my fellow candidates, and the citizens of Wakefield for watching tonight. Wakefield schools stand at a moment of great promise and opportunity. Last year, voters invested in our town's future by overwhelmingly supporting the building of a new Galvin Middle School. Now, the school committee is poised to hire a dynamic new educator as our new superintendent of schools who will help lead our system in a new direction. I want to bring my experience, passion, and energy to this effort. I'm a graduate of Assumption College and Tufts University, where I earned an MA in history. I have dedicated my professional career to advocating for the role of the arts and the humanities in our public schools and in our communities. First, as head of public relations for the PBD Essex Museum, as communications director for the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and as a board member for the Massachusetts Foundation for the Humanities and Mass Creative. As a parent, I've made to the lives of my children, and I'm a lifelong learner myself. I love education, I love talking about it, thinking about it, helping it move forward. My wife Kathleen McNamara and I bought our house in Greenwood about 14 years ago, and we're so happy in our community and in our neighborhood. I've always had a belief that quality public schools are the foundation for a healthy, vibrant community. Last year, while running for selectmen, I made the New Galvin a centerpiece of my campaign, and I was inspired by the conversations that I had with parents, teachers, community leaders, and general taxpayers who wanted to see the school system move forward. The overwhelming support for the New Galvin demonstrated that Wakefield wants a better school system, and it wants a better future for its children. I chose to run for school committee this year to harness that energy and enthusiasm, and to work with the current school committee, the new superintendent, and Wakefield's elected leadership, rest together. To do that, I need your support, and I ask for your vote on April 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, Mark Sardella of the Wakefield Daily Item, and William LaForme of the Wakefield Patch. Please remember, folks, that the election coming up is April 30th. It's the same day as the Senate primary for our U.S. Senator to replace now Secretary of State John Kerry. Democracy is something that only works for those who participate, so please get out to the polls on April 30th and cast your votes. And also remember that March, May 6th is the beginning of annual town meeting, and your participation is needed there as well. Thank you again. Thank you for joining us. We're going to take a 30-minute break, and we will be back at 8:30 with the candidates.